I said I have to leave, so. Well, let's call this meeting Order 501 PM, so we'll call.
Ex officio member Woodward, absent. Commissioner Aria?
Present.
Commissioner Frost, absent. Commissioner Gibbs, absent. Vice Chair Merrick?
Here.
Chair speaking.
Here, you have the call.
All right. Okay, guess who's gonna be doing the pledge? Mr. Russo, would you give us in the pledge?
Sure. Last one, huh?
Oh wait, there's Brett.
There's Brett, yeah.
Hi Brett.
Okay, go ahead, ready? Hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to approve the agenda, but I'd like to move 5B and C in front of 5A and 5D. So we can get Soderland out of here and Gabriel out of here. Yeah, that work?
Perfect.
Okay, consensus?
I need the first, consensus?
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the motion is to move items 5B and 5C and from item 5A, starting with 5B. Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Report on the posting?
The agenda was properly posted on August 28th.
Thank you, Noah. 2A, written in oral communications. We had two. Ian?
Hi.
Hi.
So, real quick, I think the City Council voted to record the meeting.
Would you mind stepping up to the mic?
Because they're recorded by the microphone. It's recorded there.
Yeah. I don't know if you know that City Council voted to, kind of, to what, record the meeting or something? I don't know, something like that, so.
What is it? I'm sorry, can you?
Record the meeting, so, that's one thing. The other thing too is, we've been testing radios here in town. And they do work, you can get these right now, they work from all the way to Santa Barbara, all the way to San Clemente, both sides of the hill, puts them all together on one network, this radio. And we've been testing that. This other one here is from another community. It's a bigger radio, it's older. But this is what they use for their fire watch program. Arson watch, neighborhood watch, they all are on one system, on one common repeater that everybody talks on. And it's a nonprofit. Free of government control, but includes government. So, there are assigned numbers as well. So, an example is, my number is 101. A neighboring community gets started in 200s. The fire department is 700s, the sheriff was 900. LA County Sheriff, all in the same radio. And we could listen to each other, so, that's something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Kevin Keegan, step on up, bud.
Good afternoon, everyone. Public Safety Commissioners, Public Safety Department Leaders. My name is Kevin Keegan, I'm here for two reasons today. I would like to make a request as it relates to the emergency alert system pilot test, the potential for one. And I also would like to make a comment as it relates to our new school resource officer. An emergency alert system for the city of Malibu has been a hot topic of discussion recently. During the Malibu City Council regular meeting on August 11th, Director Duennas and the City Council members discussed emergency alert system options based on this commission's recommendations. At that City Council regular meeting on August 11th, Mayor Pro Tem Bruce Silverstein asked if some or all of the proposed solutions, including alert FM, new radios, a mobile outdoor alert siren and more, could be pilot tested at one of our school locations in Malibu. Around the same time, it was announced that our joint Malibu High School and Middle School campus is being officially designated as an emergency operations center or a similar designation, as I may have the wrong term, for the city and for our community. With all that in mind, as a member of the Malibu School Safety Committee and the Malibu PTSA for our high school and middle school, I reached out to Director Duennas and asked if she would be open to Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein's suggestion that we consider using the joint campus as the local site to pilot test the various emergency alert system options available to Malibu, our residents and neighbors. Director Duennas indicated an openness to discuss this possibility. Subsequently, I spoke with Principals Almeida and Schellenberg at Malibu High School and Middle School, they too are open to this possibility and would like to learn more. If Director Duennas and your commission helped us move a pilot test forward, we would of course reach out to the school district and include them in the planning. Also, I suspect we would want to have a representative or two from the surrounding neighborhood via our schools advise on the emergency alert system pilot test planning. Therefore, I ask you today, unless you have an alternative location and plan in place, can you take or plan any action today to help move this emergency alert system pilot test concept forward for the city of Malibu? And with that, I would also just like to extend a heartfelt note of gratitude from our schools for all that your commission did, all the Public Safety Department did to help establish a school resource officer in Malibu for the first time. It was because of the work that you did that we have an SRO. I can, I met with the SRO several times, I talked to the principals today. It could not be going better. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Let's go right into staff updates.
All right. Well, building on what Kevin Keegan brought up with the emergency alert system. For alert FM, right now, we're trying to figure out which FM stations will have the best coverage in Malibu, because, you know, it's a pretty hefty investment, a grand almost million dollars, and we wanted to see how much of the city could be covered, so. We reached out to a lot of our volunteer groups to test, we have a list of like six stations for people to test inside their home. We think a lot of people who get in their car, but we need people to test in their home. And one thing we were afraid of, and Mark Russo kind of confirmed this for me, a lot of people don't have portable FM radios. So, we're gonna order some to lend out to people to help us with the test, because I think the council agrees that we do want to have a pretty good idea of what we're buying. We're gonna invest almost a million dollars, we want to know how much of the city will benefit from this, so. Our hope is that if we get enough people to test the FM stations in their home, we'll have a better sense of how well the coverage will be and will help the council to make an informed decision. So, we're working on that. Sirens, you may have heard by now that LA City received six, right? Six sirens total through Home and Security Grant. They're keeping two and they offered up four for the rest of the LA area. We grabbed two, try not to be too greedy, but we grabbed two. We'll be receiving, probably it'll take about a month or so, there's a lot of paperwork. It's a federal grant funded item, so we have to do an official transfer, et cetera. But once we receive them, the plan is that then we would take them out to various areas and test them, so people could see it and hear it and, you know, kind of, put this idea into reality, so people can see it. And at the same time, since there are only two, we'll work with the fire department and then we'll come back to the commission as well, we want to get input on where's the best place to put these, because if we have a red flag in November, where are we putting them? And so we want to be very strategic in that decision, trying to pick the neighborhoods where we'll get the most bang for the buck, which neighborhoods benefit the most, which, that's part of like with the testing and all that, what neighborhoods really want them, maybe some neighborhoods like, you know, I don't know. But we want to be very strategic with that, so we'll be bringing this back to the commission after we talk with the fire department, just so we can get some community input on this as well. Lastly, we're wrapping up a hazard mitigation grant request that will fund a pilot project to do home hardening rebate program. If awarded, it would provide up to $20,000 per resident, $10,000 for home hardening and $10,000 for like brush clean projects. That would be max, but it's a rebate and it's also 75%. So, whatever you spend, so if you spend $10,000, you'll get a rebate of $7,500, right? Which is still a deal, right? We're hoping that the 75% rebate will encourage a lot of people to maybe do the project they've been procrastinating. You know, it's on the list of things to do, replace my windows or whatever it is, the roofing materials siding. All those things will be eligible, decking, whatever it is. So, we're really hoping we get it and that it'll help kind of people to more quickly maybe make improvements they've been thinking about. So, anyways, that's December 15th. We probably won't know the outcome of that until next spring or summer, unfortunately. Things are moving slowly in Washington, so we've got more, it's gonna be a while.
All right, good evening, everyone. I have a couple updates. As you know, our safety preparedness fair is scheduled for the Saturday, September 6th, 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We do have an official sponsor of SoCal Edison, so they will be sponsoring our fair. This is going to be the largest event that we've had so far to date, between vendors, a really large, you have a tractor truck, variety of vehicles coming in. Food, we have tummies, tiki shaped ice, we have animals, goats, therapy dogs. We have some really cool activities for the kids, the earthquake simulator, rock wall, fire extinguisher. And, let's see what else we have. I believe that's all we have for the activities. So, we're hoping it's going to be a really great event for the family, that all of you will be there. The next I have on September 15th, we do have an American Red Cross Blood Drive here. It'll be here at City Hall in the MPR. And then last but not least, we have our next Circus, which is scheduled to start September 16th.
Six?
16th. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
We need to mission have a few updates on my end. So, on September 11th at 6:00 PM here in the MPR, working with the Sheriff's Department to host a protect your home workshop. So, obviously there's a lot of discussions around what steps, you know, home property owners can take to protect properties in the case of, you know, having any private securities. One of those of course being filing a letter of agency, getting cameras, getting dogs, you know, placing fencing around your property, no trespassing sign, all these sorts of next steps that you can do to better protect your property, so we're gonna have a workshop on that with Deputy De Mateo from the Sheriff's Department next Thursday here at 6:00 PM. He's also gonna be upstairs at the Public Safety Preparedness Fair, talking to community members this Saturday, so. We'll be kind of really pushing that to make sure people are informed on what they can do to protect your property. Our impound yard, summer impound yard concluded over the weekend. I'll let our children talk a little bit more about the toad yard numbers. Very busy weekend, this past weekend, so a lot of good stuff happening there at the high school. Our RV populations are really under control. Parking enforcement, Sheriff's Department did exceptional work. Just really deciding as needed, working, providing outreach as needed. It's just a handful of them that pop in and out on occasion throughout the summer now, at the end of the summer, so we're doing real good as far as our RV population control. We're working on adding additional parking signs over inside the Malibu library parking lot, as you all know, sometimes some of those vehicles that you see in the library tend to stay there overnight and cause a ruckus and kind of join amongst the group of homeless population that's in there in the courtyard area as well as the parking area, so we're looking to reinforce the parking signs there, add additional signs and really add some more to our tool blocks as far as what we can do as far as enforcement goes. We're starting the long process of doing a zone text amendment for the temporary year-long impound yard that we proposed based off your recommendation here at the Aoki Lot, so. It's obviously a very complex process, it involves a zone text amendment, because the way the property currently is, it's not zoned for these purposes. So, we just have to work with our Community Development Department, take it to council, take it to coastal, take it to planning, and it's a lot, it's multiple steps, but we're working hand in hand and we're all gonna have this, you know, we're trying to do this as quick as possible, so we've been we've been meeting and we'll be looking at, you know, move this forward as soon as possible, you know, partnership again with with all the different departments involved, so that process is ongoing. And then ultimately, as far as homelessness goes, I guess I could talk a little bit more about that as far as homelessness report, but really a lot of it is centralized at Legacy Park, as you all can tell, so.
It is what, I'm sorry?
Centralized. The city's homeless population is really the bulk of the people they see at Legacy Park. Proliferation of shopping carts, so we worked with Ralphs, they hired RMS, so they have a new Shark Cart Control System vendor that basically submit a report and they go out and retrieve the carts and hopefully is in the process of geofencing their carts pretty soon, so we're working with them on that. Very good partners and working with us on that, so hopefully that gets done soon and that prohibits, you know, the growth of the carts at Legacy Park, at the library. That puts a lock on the wheel so that they don't leave the shopping center, so. It's gonna be a good strategy moving forward, and then of course, we'll be working with Ralphs to submit those reports as soon as possible. So, next week, the plan is to go ahead and work with our outreach team and sheriffs to go ahead and start retrieving some of those carts again, you know, until those more permanent, you know, efforts are in place, we're gonna continue to work with outreach and get those carts back to the respective stores. So, lots of good work happening and we'll be good at that.
Thank you.
Gabe?
Good evening, everybody. I got three quick points to make. I wanted to touch on the condition of our fuels for fire season approaching. We're about due for another update that comes out every two weeks, but the last one was 71% live fuel moisture, which is almost exactly at the historic average for that date, the last day it was sampled, and exactly where it was last year. So, it's a wild card though, we don't know where it's going from here, right? I think with the predicted weather, it's gonna go down quickly, but we'll see. We've been getting about a handful of calls on tanks and hydrants around the community. People saying the hydrants are out of service, some tanks are empty, and a lot of the information was coming from the Army Corps of Engineers, actually. So, if you hear of any, just have them contact me or our department, we'll check it out. None have been empty, they're all filled as they're supposed to be. The broken hydrants were actually not broken, they just were missing a cap, so. Everybody's nervous about water supply after what happened in Palos, so we understand that very much. Lastly, I wanted to touch back with Commissioner Merrick about the beacon boxes. We did our annual inspection of them, trimming the fuels around them, cleaning them, cleaning the light, wiping them down, cleaning the brush around. So, we have 49, 17 lights were out, which we knew a lot of them were. One was vandalized up by your neighborhood, Mr. Segal, the one up the street where the baseball bat looked like, so 18 lights are out. Two boxes were destroyed in the fire. One at Big Rock and the other at the west end of Ramble Vista. So, we're kind of down. I met with the vendor the other day, I get the impression that he may be backing out of this business. He knew that these lights were a problem from the beginning. He's gonna try to get us replacements, tariffs and supply chain issues, it doesn't sound super promising. He suggested that we might go beaconless, and I said, well, that's half of the equation, the beacon box. But I think in time, that's gonna be the reality, is that they're not gonna have lights. But while I'm here, I'm gonna try to at least get those lights back up online. But he knows they're a big problem, they're a problem at the end, so. The two that were damaged, destroyed in the fire, we have one right now to put back up and he's gonna give us another one. So, we'll get those two replaced soon, so. That is the condition of the beacon box. Oh, he claims that three were used by agencies. I don't know, I think the brigades opened one and I think the utility companies opened one. I was at the sixth closest where the fire came into Malibu as the fire got into those neighborhoods, offering them the strike teams coming in, nobody wanted them. So, I don't know which ones he said were open, but they weren't where the fire was hitting our.
And solar's not an option for the lights?
They are solar, they have a solar panel on the top. But, it's kind of crazy, I mean, the ones that are in the bright sun are going out and some of the ones that are a little bit shaded are staying on, we try to keep trimmed around the top.
All right.
But, so.
The one I bought at Home Depot for like 10 bucks, working out for a second year.
Get them to, yes. So, 17 are out, we're working on getting those, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Do we have questions for staff?
Yes.
Now's the time for your dissertation.
Another thing that I'm dealing with.
So, sirens. There are some sirens in Holland there. The houses have receivers as well. So, is it possible for us to get those senior citizens, those hard of hearing or homes with double panels? I mean, zip.
Possibly, I mean, we can look into that. I heard that as well, I was just having a chance to look into, I don't know if that's an accessory, that it's possible to be particular one, but.
Maybe we can like get a deal and residents pay half and city pays half, but it's not that expensive. And then the radios, are they senior citizen friendly, user friendly? The FM radios?
Oh, I mean, they'll. I haven't seen them yet.
You haven't seen them?
I mean, our big thing we want to be digital.
Yeah.
Because it's just a dial, sometimes it's hard to tell what station you're on.
Yeah.
And then you have to listen to it to tell you something.
I mean, it says channel one, channel two, channel three.
No, not FM radio, it's on your.
It sometimes says, like says it loud, but.
Oh, really? I guess I haven't listened to FM radio in a very long time. I mean, besides my car. Anyways, yeah, so we were just looking at digital FM radios. Not super expensive ones, just for testing purposes and just very good emergency supplies.
And the ones that you gave away two years ago?
Those, the fire department provided those, those were Noah weather radios, and my understanding is they only get AM, not FM.
Really? Okay, great. Now, Sarah, are we also gonna have an earthquake simulator for this year?
Yes, at the fair, there will be.
Big one, right?
Yes, it is an eight seater, so it is a little bit larger from the one that we had last year.
What is it?
It's an eight seater earthquake simulator, so it's a little bit larger.
Wow, okay, that's much bigger. And Louise, there are two homeless people who were hired by a terrorist organization to carry out a kidnapping of a human rights activist in Malibu. So, there's a lot going on over there. They're, you know, they're people who don't look like, who just look very average. And Gabe, I have a question for the amazing Gabe. Is it possible to do community organizing? Like phone banks or something, all volunteer from Malibu residents to call fellow Malibu residents and invite them, encourage them to call on you, your department for fire safety reassessment that the city offers? Is it possible to do something so that everyone makes the changes necessary? Because the homes that you guys helped, like Scott Dietrich, he's the only, he's on Sumac Ridge and everything up and above and around, unfortunately, all those homes were lost. But because he called you guys and the measurements he took to make it safe, his house stayed intact, so. Is there any help you need from the Malibu community to call every single resident? To message us or talk to them, to friend, community organizing to encourage them to get the fire safety assessment?
Well, I think I'll defer that to Susan, but before I do, you know, one big problem we face here is that a lot of people rent their homes out, or it's their second or third, or is that what in the other day, night in Malibu? Yeah, so, it's hard to often get with the resident, there's certainly other people. Noah has just added a new, we got with modern times, we have a QR code now. So, we're trying to make it as easy as possible, we're putting the QR codes around, we'll have it at the safety expo. Like I said before, we've only gotten 10% of the people in town who have inspections, that's just not enough, so.
It's community organizing, so, people won't, some people never come out of their houses, like, you know, things like that.
As well.
Phone bait, Alexis, I think I'll defer that to my boss.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, to call people to have them say.
Yeah, I mean, community organizing for two years.
I know you're. I mean, certainly, you're free to do whatever you want, and I mean, any kind of outreach is helpful, you know, just to let people know, you know, so. If you want to do something for the benefit from that.
I can't do a lot because of the Brown Act, but if you guys didn't volunteer, I can bring a lot of volunteers for you.
Alexis, one other thing about that too, another way we're trying to reach everyone, as Brad gets more and more fire wise communities going, in the initial meetings, we're just saying, hey, it's pertinent that you get everybody in here to get an inspection. And then often it just takes somebody, strong leader in the neighborhood to get it going. We have a situation in Malibu, Colley Road right now, where there's one woman who's just like putting flyers and everybody's mail box.
Candace?
No.
I can't.
No. But she's lit a fire under everybody, pardon the pun, but it's, and she's following up at HOA meetings and keeps putting emails out. And we're going there pretty regularly, but there's more dangerous places that we need to get to more so than just there.
Yeah, because I want all of us to thank Kevin for, but it's gonna happen tonight. Or we prepare if it happens tonight, but, thank you so much, thank you for all that you did.
Brian, what you got?
Just that I was out this weekend down by Zuma and I saw the blue shirts, slow PCH group. And that's from our department, right? Yeah, so, they were very distinctive, they were walking from Westford Beach up to Zuma. A whole big group of them in their really bright blue shirts, so. I saw them and it looked like they were doing good work, and that's all I have to say.
Brett?
First updates and so forth. You haven't seen it, last night on National CBS News, just Chief Maroni and also Brigade was on that as well. National news, which is really interesting. Talking a lot, the chief was talking about defending your own house and so, but really trying to get training. And he was highlighting the brigade as an option or as a way that communities are embracing this concept of working in collaboration and partnership. So, it was nice to see that, we didn't know it was getting to national news yesterday, but it did. So, we'll put it on our site. We've also been pretty active now and just continuing a lot of training. We did about 10 hours of off road training last weekend. This weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, there's also training, I'll be at the fair, I have some folks there too. On Sunday is recertification, so we'll have everybody going through a lot of testing, so hopefully certified. And we picked up some additional equipment that we're getting. Also, just to, you know, to Gabe, what you're talking about, the more homes we can assess, the better. And we're doing that constantly, just as you are. We'll cover slightly different geography, I mean, we really haven't overlapped or anything, it's very harmonious kind of, you know. And more people we can convince to harden their homes and understand where's the code going, what can bring stuff to your house from burning down, the better. I really look forward to those, Susan, as you were saying. If funding becomes available to help supplement mitigation costs, that's huge. And that will really help encourage people to take the action that they need to. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, Brett.
Bye.
Gabe, didn't, we spoke briefly, maybe six months ago, about maybe giving away some swag? Was that, did that happen? Were we gonna re-agendize something to talk about, like a giveaway? I think I made some snarky remark about home signs like this.
Or, oh, for if you've had a home inspection. Oh, we did talk about that.
Hats, shirts.
We have not moved on that front, but we can look into that.
Something to think about. I've asked a few people in my neighborhood if they've had home hardening assessments. And I think something that might be nice to have on the website is a disclaimer that you're not gonna turn them in if they have illegal structures.
Yeah, I mean, I know that they emphasize that, but I know it's an issue.
That's the first thing I say, I say to people, like, hey, how you doing? You know, just so you know, this is between us, it's not going anywhere.
Okay.
But yeah, we really emphasize that.
All right. Also, something that we ran into, we had knocked box approval for condos and everything else. I wanna make sure that all the deputies know that they have, or they should have, the keys. Every deputy in Malibu should have a knockbox key. Is that, do, do they know that they have knockbox keys? Do?
They have been issued, yes, um, primarily they were Calabasas and Westfield and Agora, but, um, now that you're telling me that they're gonna be in Malibu, I'll definitely put the word out to the deputies that they can use it.
And they're all the same, right? The knocks between.
I can address that briefly, um, there's the law enforcement box and the fire box, and there's been some confusion over time with that. But for access to people's homes, uh, like with a gate system, that, they're supposed to, per the fire code, have the fire access one. Some mistakenly got mixed in with the law enforcement ones and got law enforcement ones on there. There's a color code, red's for fire, yellow's for law, but we don't have many of the law ones over on this side of the hill, I don't believe. But, but there is a difference, and, and sometimes you can see them just stacked on top of each other, right, on the yellow one.
Sure.
But, but they're required to have the fire one, and I don't believe the deputies have that key.
Okay, did we land, I don't, I don't remember, did we land on upgrading our code so that people with gates now have to have both? Or condo associations?
We, we did, they, the council decided to do more of a community education type of thing for the law ones, not an actual like ordinance that Calabasas has, but actually requires them to have one. So we, like, when we first had that, we had the flyers with, uh, deputies not upgrade that boards, we were pushing it out to the HOAs, we're pushing it out to different. Uh, we did get several response back, people like asking for the link, where they can buy, and we, we got a contact loss association, so there were installations. But I would say it was like, it could have, like, a strong amount of, like, yeah, like some were just like non-responsive, or.
Sure.
Yeah, they'll be like, oh, we'll look into it, 'cause, you know, it was like, uh, each knockbox was like four or five hundred dollars, and then, like, then you have to hire, like, someone that works on the actual installation part of it, so some people were kind of, uh, turned away by that, but, yeah, I mean, it's not required, personally, but the law ones, I believe, but.
Alright, thanks for clarifying.
Of course.
Um, in, to clarify again, we're going to have like a robust agenda item for the, um, emergency alert, uh, Alert FM. We're gonna be going through all that again.
Yeah, so Alert FM will probably go straight back to the council.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But what we wanna bring back here is just to get your input on the strategy for deploying the mobile sirens.
Um, and in case, Alexis, Brian, you're not aware, it's mandatory for new safety commissioners to go into the, uh, alert earthquakes.
Okay, sure?
Yeah, it's mandatory.
No, it's not.
It's a new, it's a new rule.
I'll do it, I'm sorry.
It's, it's a new rule, uh, that's all I have.
So we also do our comments now or later?
Now.
Commission comments now?
Yep.
Oh, so I have my seven pages for that.
Alright.
Should, may I?
Yeah, of course.
So Noah, um, if you could put the video there, that would be so wonderful. I think we were all sixteen years old when we were told that where our, when emergency vehicles have sirens on to not drive. So on the crash that happened on the corner of, on Friday, corner, with the, with the slow chase, in the corner of, um, PCH and Canaan, I wanna know why there were four cars, why there were four cars who drove into the direction of the, um, emergency vehicle with sirens. And the video shows, and it's just a couple of seconds, and also I'm wondering, like, Caltrans did not turn that light red. Because everyone was aware of the chase, we could hear it, we knew about it, so this is a flaw that hopefully can address. Caltrans did not turn Canaan southbound light.
I don't think they have the capability to just put the light, they can't.
Yeah, they do. They can, can they, so to, they can turn it.
I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, they know.
Those lights aren't linked, the new lights from John Tyler to, um, is it McClure Tunnel, that we're, that we did, those have the ability to be, or had the ability to be remotely activated.
So I'm really concerned about people, I, I, I see it as my pet peeve, people who are sixteen years old. I, I see it on PCH all the time, people just drive while, um, you know, this, there are two people who are about to turning, turn south into PCH, and there one that turns out into PCH before the crash, and then there's the eighty-year-old, I'm assuming Malibu residents, 'cause of night. Um, so four people elected to turn into PCH with sirens that everyone was hearing. So I, I was wondering if we could put large signs in the roads that enter Malibu, let's say Canaan everything, to remind them, you know, listen to emergency vehicle, um, sirens, please respect the laws. And we were sixteen years old when we were told to do that as new drivers, and, um, so if we can have signs, like large signs for people who enter Malibu. In general, just remind them, uh, to please respect emergency vehicles, because this could have been, uh, it, it didn't have to be people turning into the direction of emergency vehicles, so that's one thing, thank you for letting me, um, land on that. Um, we also still have unlimited parking, uh, hours during the day on Civic Center Way, so I don't know if you guys are thinking of making it six-hour parking limit, or somebody can park at, uh, six in the morning and stay until midnight or something, sorry. Okay, so, another one, um, there was Public Works Department made an arrangement with the, I'm assuming the owner of Moon Shadows to do the crosswalk, uh, with the light, with the traffic light, um, naturally, the Public Safety Commission was not, um, made privy to that, to assess safety, but in two weeks, it's gonna be a four-year anniversary of the young father who was crossing a crosswalk with the light, Eric Berg, white Nicholas Eteri. And unfortunately, he was hit by a utility truck, and unfortunately, he passed away right there at the scene. So we don't know if we put a crosswalk, um, by Moon Shadows, city paying for it, for the business, uh, to profit. I think that all of the package is two hundred and eighty million dollars, or I can't think of the number, for that and Los Angeles and another package. Um, so I'm very concerned about that crosswalk, where it's gonna be alcohol involved, people, because we have seen that unfortunately, crossing a highway, US highway is never safe, and so I'm really hoping for a lot of studies for that crosswalk track, for some of the city is gonna pay a lot of money. Uh, in front of, yes, it's, it's gonna benefit Moon Shadows, but, um, we have seen in Malibu that has not, um, guaranteed safety of pedestrians, so hopefully there's gonna be, 'cause, and his name is Eric Berg, the anniversary of his passing is gonna be, the fourth anniversary is gonna be on September seventeenth, he had two, they had a one-year-old and a three-year-old son at the time that he passed, Eric Berg. Um, he worked at Ellison's house, okay. I have, um, received, so that was, uh, the next, uh, item is that I have received a lot of complaints about people who live in central Malibu. Um, they wanna walk on Civic Center Way, and I've, I've heard this a lot, but, uh, this month I got three different people. Um, when you are walking on Civic Center Way, and you're on the northwest, no, I'm sorry, northwest and northeast corner of Webb Way and Civic, or Stewart Ranch Road and Civic Center Way, there's no way to cross the street, you have to make, you have to cross the street three times in order to cross, uh, northeast and northwest corners of the street, because there's bushes and there's no place. So, uh, people are asking for an assessment of that, it's very simple, to just make it possible for people to cross at, uh, that one, instead of going three times, crossing it three times, and a lot of people use it for hiking and peppered ice, and they use it for jogging, uh, trotting. So that's another item, and then, um, that we already talked about. I cannot find a Cover Six camera anywhere, I drove around, it's no longer at the corner of Big Rock and PCH, do you know where it is?
I, I don't know, Pam, but I can ask.
Okay, I have, I haven't seen it anywhere, I went to all the burn areas, I couldn't see it, and I know that was part of the sales pitch, that we would have that camera at all times, and we would have two.
I mean, it's not part of the contract, so, um, they provided it, I think it was to Charlie for a while, so it's possible they had to deploy it somewhere else, or that.
Oh, it's not in the contract?
No.
So in, in order for the commission to give a recommendation, we were told that there's two of them, so maybe that's not in the contract. So, yeah, maybe they didn't put it. And so we're commissioned to examine road safety, but for, from June through December, that grant. The city council, the city council, I think they gave us the assignment to assess road safety in Malibu for six months, from June to December.
You don't do all that, no?
It wasn't, uh, yeah, so it was, okay, so and again, I, I wanna make sure, another comment is that I wanna make sure that.
And just, just, I mean, a lot of the, the road issues that I really need to be discussed with Public Works, it's, I know it's safety, but it's, it's in drop shop, we can, in Caltrans, etc. I'll always see him sometime, yeah.
Um, I also, just, I really want us to think heaven forbid that there's gonna be some, a disaster tonight. Just so that, that mentality, are we ready? Are the, are the trees trimmed? Do we have brush clearance? And speaking of that, um, question for, you know, for you, I also, we can discuss later, but how safe is this Smith property? Or the so-called wetland that had sixty feet high flames during the Franklin fires? Uh, I know there's one drop of water that makes it, I guess, ashore, but, um, um, I just, I hope that it's safe, it's right next to, um, about three thousand people going all the way up, so it's very dangerous situation, uh, so I would, would like to know if that's safe or not. And just to discuss that, yeah, I have, I still am very concerned about the so-called wetland or ashore, because I never see sign of blood there, and so for, um, Malibu, um, um, Public Safety Fair, um, I was wondering, it's too late to order now, but it's a sign that we do, a big banner, 'cause now you're gonna decide on a company that will do banners or all, all printing for us. It will be very large sign, and I know I was in the committee last year, so we discussed a lot, but it would be a very general sign that just says, um, free to public, no, uh, free public event, City of Malibu, open to public, uh, no, I'm sorry, free event, open to public, and the City of Malibu. And this can be used for any event Malibu has, but especially for the Safety Fair, it will be very large banner, I would put it, you know, by PCH and Webb Way or wherever.
We can, we have some regulations, the sign we have is as big as we're allowed.
Okay, I've seen that, okay, that's all we can, we'll wait for that. Um, so there is, um, a surf rider regular who lives in Ventura, who accosted, um, a French family visiting. They had three small children, and the man accosted the French family, who's speaking French. And it almost got physical, at the moment I told, there was a VOP and a sheriff on the, I, I happen to be driving, and I speak French, and I saw him accosting them and almost hitting them, so I gave him the free Malibu T-shirts and apologized, but I did report it to the sheriff and VOPs, and so, uh, and I've heard that, um, you know, anyway, so I want to say that it happened. And thank you for the disaster preparedness postcards, I'm really proud of you for that. Is it possible to have a, uh, sustainable material, like recycled next year, going next? Okay, it's glossy, I mean, it's, it's wonderful that we have it, I was just wondering if that's a question, doesn't matter. Uh, people are driving fast in small streets, there's a lot of complaint, I have twelve emails on that. That people are speeding on Civic Center Way, during school hours, and they're hunking on the parents to go faster than twenty-five miles, but, and they go like, excuse me, it says twenty-five here, so the parents were complaining about that. Sometime when we get the agenda, the Thursday before the Wednesday, let's say we have to do, uh, the parking schedule assessment or something, and we need to do research, so for those situations where we have to make decisions and votes, is it possible to get those sooner, or is just soon?
Uh, we can try, um,
Yeah.
Yeah, we can try, when we think there's, especially if we think it's gonna be an internet nightmare, where you might want extra time, we can talk.
Just to do due diligence.
Yeah.
Right, um. Also, um, I'm get, I got one email from a mom who's on, passed away, um, on Malibu Canyon Road, it wasn't within the city limits. But is it possible, 'cause you're already going to talk to, um, supervisor, uh, the LA Camp supervisor for, for other things, um. It's been really big in my heart for twenty-two years, um, to put KRLs or very strong guardrails on Malibu. We start with Malibu Canyon Road, and this will be multi-agency, multi-jurisdiction, so, um, but to make all of Malibu Canyon Road and Las Vergenes Road safe. Right now, we have a lot of fatal situations, it's a miracle that we don't have more fatal accidents right now, but it's very dicey. You know, I'm a skier, I go up the mountains, we know the risks, but I was wondering if we had, it's not that expensive for KRLs or guardrails, if we could, if, it would be extra work for you, but.
It's public works, again, all, everything with the roads is all public work.
Okay, so I have to talk to him, but I would love, so I would like to put it out there, I would love for all of Malibu Road and Malibu Canyon Road and Las Vergenes Road on both sides in some occasions, um, to have guardrails or KRLs, 'cause I can, I need more than one hand, uh, to count the number of people I knew who passed away in the past twenty-two years, so that's why I'm very concerned, it's a very big issue for me, and that's why I became a Public Safety Commissioner. And, um, the IPS drivers, um, we saw them commit seven driving violations. There were two times they drove the wrong way in Malibu Country Mart, uh, parking lot, the shoe, the horseshoe, the major parking lot caused problems for others, and other time they, uh, drove out of, uh, a slot on, um, Whole Foods and almost hit a car. So we want IPS to be very mindful of, uh, I'm not looking at you, but very mindful and, um, and humble toward, uh, Malibu residents and safety, because twelve things. I saw two, and we've seen another, 'cause there's something called Malibu Safety Alliance, and people say that, and we're done, sorry about that, we're done.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No.
Thank you, Chair, I'm glad, Chair, for allowing.
Thank you very much, thank you for being part of this.
Thank you.
Um, alrighty, we are on to five B.
We have a consent calendar, Chair, and we have a public speaker for a consent calendar.
Um.
The approval minutes.
Oh, consent calendar, correct, okay, that's correct. Let's do the approval of minutes, let's have the, uh, speaker first. Thank you, Mr. Embry.
Yeah, I spoke last month on this item, and I think that the staff probably corrected, there's a, an issue that I'm glad Brian's here, because on uh, the December minutes, it's page three, add a question, there's a middle of the page. And the reference is a comment to lights out or lights not working. And, uh, for the record, the, um, I think the speaker was in response to power outage, uh, Brian's here, you can correct the, the minutes, but in the middle of the page, it just says, um, temporary lights weren't working, or were out, or something, and that's, uh, almost a year.
Just as a commissioner comment?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay, give us the ti.
You're speaking of traffic signal, or were you talking about?
Yeah, traffic signal.
At a particular location, right?
Um, yeah, but I, I'm having a hard time, it was one of two places, it was the temporary light, so it's, it was, what, this, this was December of the twenty-four?
Yeah, it's the middle of page three.
Of twenty-four, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if that light even exists anymore, but, uh. And you, you replied to cell service, uh, two paragraphs lower, and you didn't say which carrier, but, uh, I didn't know. And you re- you replied to cell service, uh, two paragraphs lower, and you didn't say which carrier, but, uh, I didn't know.
Well, it's any cell service when they shut the power off. It was more of in reference to that when the, when they do the power shut off, we don't have any way to communicate, so we don't get the alerts.
Well, anyway, T-Mobile's got generators all over the place.
Thank you, Ryan. Alright, um, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Three B one. One second. And thank you for getting this stuff, uh, recorded, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, uh, yeah, I'll second it.
Motion in a second.
Commissioner Aria?
I, so this is for the agenda for?
Yeah.
Approval of the minutes.
For December?
Both.
Yeah, so I I have to abstain, because I wasn't considering that.
Oh, no, sure. Can we go up to that?
No, but if you listen, if you listen to the recording, then then you can vote, but.
Yeah, I did, and I, so is it good? Yeah, I approve it.
Is that correct?
Because I wasn't commissioning it.
If she listened to it, then she can vote on it, even though she wasn't part of it.
I will have to double check with that one, Chair.
So either abstain or yes.
Can we have a two-zero vote?
That's why I'm going to double check with, uh, city clerk. Uh.
Yeah, if it doesn't work, we can bring it back from this one.
Yeah.
Because if she abstains, then we have no court, right?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Or she's, if if according to the minutes, if her about vote doesn't count, this, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, so I will say yes now, and we'll.
If she wasn't clear. I don't know if she was on. I'm, I understand, but I'm just worried about the vote.
Yeah, I'll see if I'm qualified, so I'm gonna say I right now, and then if I'm qualified, yeah.
Uh, Chair with, uh, recommendation, uh, to postpone this item until we receive the update from city clerk.
Is that to your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, uh, let's move it to, uh, five B.
Doesn't matter. Alright. How you doing, Commission? Um, so just wanted to kind of bring you up to date on some of the stuff we're doing, um. Unfortunately, we're still in Susan's well aware, this, we're still operating with one vehicle, which has been a little bit challenging for us for the most part. We do have one in service at the station, but we're hoping to get that back maybe in the next week or two, so, um. Hopefully, there's light at the tunnel. Um, our three new vehicles are in various stages of the vaalment process. Um, we're trying to keep tabs on that as much as we can, but it's been a little bit of a challenge, because there's been some. Shifting in the Sheriff's Department, so a lot of people that were in place when the vaalment started were a minimal longer in that position, so it just kind of. Throws things off track sometimes, but, uh, we're on top of that. We have two new VOPs that came on board, so we're pretty happy about that, it's a process getting them, um. Vetted and approved by the department, so it's Vincent Sala, and we'll bring him in here one day, and then Lily Bradshaw is the other one that's that's come on. Vincent is a LAPD volunteer, so he's coming over to the, to the number one team, and Lily's a Pepperdine graduate. So, she's pretty excited about being on board with that. Just some stats, Memorial Day through Labor Day weekend, um, our team issued four thousand four hundred thirty-four citations. Uh, we responded to fifty-four traffic collisions in the city, and we worked two thousand six hundred ninety-two hours. As VOPs in the city. Um, so, you know, it's pretty good, it's, again, it's a little bit of a challenge when you have one car, we've been in the one car mode since the first week of July. So, we're doing what we can. Um, we're gonna be at the city's Public Safety and Preparedness Fair, we're gonna be between the Tommy's booth and the Peppino's Mall. So, we'll be right in there, and, uh, we'll see what happens, um, but we will be there a little bit of live. And, uh, and then we have, we're coming up, we're gonna be working the, uh, Malibu Triathlon, which is gonna be Sunday, September fourteenth. So, we're gonna be working that from five in the morning to, um, one in the afternoon. I have the, uh, distinction of being there at four in the morning, because I'm the closest guy to there. So, I I gotta sign that detail, because the participants are gonna be coming in there. Um, so again, that's the triathlon, it's the one day, September fourteenth, Sunday, so we're looking forward to that, and, uh, that's all I got.
Andrew.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, sure.
We're slacking off with that one car.
I know, right?
It's the triathlon, are you, are you compensated by them, or is that something?
We're not compensated, we're.
We're just providing that?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we just are there as part of the Sheriff's, uh, you know, team that's that's involved in traffic.
And that, again, is just courtesy of the City of Malibu?
No, no, they're, we have a contract attached, so.
Gotcha, yeah. Yeah, because it's gonna be fully staffed, deputies, and, you know, there'll be a command trailer and all that stuff, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's a big event, yeah.
So, that's it. Any questions, or you wanna wait?
You did four thousand tickets with one car?
Yeah, roughly, four thousand four hundred thirty-four citations, so, yeah, we never, we, since, since July, we've had one car online, so.
It had milk trail on it, like.
Wow.
We picked one up from service and dropped the other one off and continued with it, so, you know.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, you're welcome, appreciate it, yeah.
I don't know how I can top that, but I'll try. Okay.
Well, waiting for the accident.
Um. So, I've got a multitude of things to talk about, so. On August eighteenth, uh, deputies were patrolling the Palisades burn area. And they, uh, observed a pickup truck with a load of scrap metal in the bed of the truck. And the suspect actively loading more scrap metal into the, to the back of the truck, and. Uh, this was in the, uh, twenty thousand three hundred block of PCH, right where Moon Shadows used to be. And the deputies, uh, contacted the suspect, and he admitted that he didn't have permission to be there or take any of that, uh, material, and so. Uh, he was arrested for grand theft of, uh, scrap metal and copper, which is a felony, so. We're still out there actively patrolling the, uh, the burn zone area and making sure that. People's, whatever they had left is not being taken from them, so. That was a great arrest by one of our deputies. Um. On the nineteenth of August, deputies responded to Cross Street Shopping Center, uh, down the street here. And they responded to a call of a dog walked inside of a car in the parking lot. And on that day, uh, it was a bright sunny day, it was probably seventy-five degrees outside according to the deputies, and, uh. When they got to the car, they saw one of the windows cracked about an inch and the dog inside, but when they looked closer, saw an infant. In the back in the car seat, with nobody around, so they immediately broke open the window and got the infant out, and fortunately, the infant was okay. Treated by, uh, paramedics, and they estimated the inside of the car was ninety degrees, and a short time later, the, uh. The mother came back, uh, with some drinks from one of the local restaurants. And she admitted to being gone for about twenty minutes, so, uh, she was arrested for felony child endangerment. So, uh, very, could have been very tragic for the infant, but fortunately, the infant was okay, and kudos to, uh, one of the good Samaritans who actually called it in. Just seeing the dog in the car, because they didn't see the, the child, so. Um. On the same day, deputies were patrolling the library parking lot down the street here, when they, uh. Saw a pickup truck, uh, with a license plate from a Mini Cooper on it. And they investigated further and found out that that truck had been registered about fifteen years. Uh, so while waiting for the tow truck to respond, uh, the owner actually walked up and got into the truck, so they contacted the owner about the, uh, registration and the license plate. And he ended up being wanted by US Marshals for a, uh, uh, he was absconding from his federal probation for a nineteen ninety-six conviction for aggravated child molestation. So, he was immediately arrested and now is in custody of US Marshals, so, another great arrest. Um. Noah, do you have the link that I sent you, if you go like the six-minute mark?
I was about to play it.
Yeah.
Unless you wanna play the whole fifty-two minutes.
No, we're going to go to the good, good spot, so, this started in East Los Angeles, um, a mother had left. Uh, the kids in the car.
I know, I know, you have a good scare.
And, you can, you're gonna have to play those, but, uh, a mother had left the kids in the car, the father was actually in another car parked right next to it. Um. The suspect saw the car running and decided to get into the car and take it. The father tried to stop him and was unsuccessful, and the, the chase was on, so it started east LA, wound through LA, and then came out on PCH. And all the way through Malibu, and the highway patrol, uh, had taken it over. And they got to Canaan and that crash happened. Fortunately, the, the children only had very minor injuries inside the car, I think, or twelve, ten, and two, I think, were the ages. Well, the suspect, he took off running and, uh, went up in the, uh, shopping center at Port's Head. Ran across the city lot at Heather Cliff there, and, uh, went, tried to get into the backyards that, on, uh. Self, near Selfridge and Doom Drive there, or Port's Head, I mean. Uh, the highway patrol officers and the deputies chased after him, they were able to, uh, take him into custody a short time later, so. A little excitement.
Thank you so much.
In Malibu.
Didn't you try to carjack a resident?
Uh, I'm not sure.
On Point Doom?
I, I wish I had more information about this, but it's all, it's all east LA's.
It's a guy in a truck.
That's what I heard, yeah.
Investigation, so.
Yeah, I was interviewed on the news.
Yeah.
That's it, ease down, he said, no, I'm done with the other.
He too is lost. Yeah, he's like, where am I? He doesn't even have shoes on, it looks like.
Yes, exactly.
You would think as a criminal, if you were in a car and you saw kids in the back, you'd be like, yeah, I should probably take a different car, but this guy decided not to.
Like pull over, huh? Go all across the city.
What does he want, what does he want it for? I mean, obviously, he's.
Uh, carjacking.
Yeah, no, I would, I mean, he's gotta have something else.
Oh, I don't know, yeah.
I'm asking question.
Well, I got some more stuff.
Oh, yes.
Alright, that's good, we can turn it off, so they ended up catching him. Um. On the twenty-fourth of August, uh, down at Tranqus Canyon in Malibu West area, a, uh. Security guard had observed the suspect, uh, checking door handles on houses in the neighborhood, and he called us. Uh, to respond to that, and about ten minutes later, we got another call from one of the homeowners. Uh, who actually came upon the suspects inside, uh, their home in Malibu West. And they got in their car and they followed the suspect in, and the suspect walked down to the bus stop at PCH at Tranqus. And was, uh, there when the deputies responded, and so the deputies were able to, uh. Apprehend that suspect, and he was arrested for burglary, because he actually made entry into one, into one of the homes there, and that homeowner startled the suspect, and he ran out the door. And this suspect, uh, he's a hardcore felon, he had been, or he's been arrested twenty-six times in his criminal history, so. He's off the street now, so, kudos to the security guard for being observing, and kudos to the, uh, homeowner for calling us immediately, so. Um, this past weekend was Labor Day weekend, it was by far the busiest weekend of the summer. Uh, Sa- Saturday, no, I'm sorry, Sunday and Monday, the, uh, parking lot at Zuma, uh, went full. At about two o'clock in the afternoon, which it hadn't happened all summer, so that just shows you how many people were there. Uh, we had to shut down the entrances, but overall, uh, there were no major incidents. There were a couple minor traffic collisions, but nobody was seriously injured, um, and that, Monday, or as of Monday, that ends our, uh, beach team deployment, so. Uh, I have the statistics for the beach team. Pull those up. So, we issued, uh, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, we issued three hundred forty-four citations for alcohol on the beach. Three citations for smoking on the beach. Fourteen citations for illegal vending on the beach, uh, one for urinating in public, uh, one for, uh, having a dog on the beach. We made ten misdemeanor arrests, we made five felony arrests, we arrested one suspect for, uh, assault and battery on a lifeguard. Uh, we issued four hundred sixty traffic citations, we issued eight hundred sixty parking citations, and we took four hundred and thirty vehicles. Over that time period, so, um, it was a busy summer, but we were out there, and we're doing the best we can with the limited staff that we have. Um, finally, I have the crime statistics from August, and. So. In August, there were twenty-four part one crimes, uh, reported, that brings our total to a hundred and seventy-three for the year. This compares with three hundred and seven the year before, so again, still going in the right direction, that's a negative forty-three point six percent increase here over here. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, you have a question?
Yes, sorry, I'm questioning, so, um, the four cars that elected to turn from Canaan. Into PCH in the, um, direction of where the sirens were, were they taking it? I mean, you, uh, you had other things to take, worry about, but, uh, and also the eighty-year-old resident, is that person okay? I'm, I'm assuming he's a Malibu resident, because it was seven forty-five at night, it wouldn't be somebody from our town, but, um, for that age, but, um. Did, did they give a ticket for?
That I don't know, um, the actual victim in the, the car that was hit, she was on her way to the premiere of, uh, Big Rock Burning.
Ah.
So, um, but she'll be okay, so.
She'll be okay.
Yeah.
But it is against the law to?
You have to yield the right of way to emergency vehicles, yes.
So, you guys give tickets to?
We do, but in this case, there were as much more important things to attend to, so.
But you had other things, yes, yes. Yes. I really have an issue with four cars doing it, I have a.
I'll, I will tell you from personal experience, it takes about ten seconds for somebody to realize that there's an emergency vehicle behind them. Or coming towards them, you know, with the sirens and the lights, people will just, it takes time for them, the process was going on, so.
Thank you, you're right.
Anything else, Brian, anything? Brian, good job, guys.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Alright, cheers. Thank you, Chris. Thank you very much. Alright, uh, let's move on to five C.
Uh, Chair speak.
Yes.
We received an answer from city clerk, all commissioners present are able to vote on item three B one.
Wonderful, thank you.
So my vote is I.
Uh.
Do we want to resurrect that?
Yes, so.
To get it off the agenda?
Yes, so can I have a clarification of first motion?
Alright, hold on. I made the motion, uh.
I'll second it. Commissioner Mark second, Commissioner Aria, yeah, your name?
Um, yeah.
Vice Chair Mayor?
I'm Scottish.
Chair, speak up, alright?
Yes. Yep, yes.
Okay, I see.
Vote as pass three zero.
Uh, five C, monthly services, uh, homeless services monthly report.
Yes, uh, good evening again, Commission, so we got the, uh, July twenty-twenty-five report from the people concerned. Uh, so all these reports are mentioned on our website, uh, they get added on a regular basis, just to kind of outline the great work that our outreach team is doing, and this evening, we have Gabe Graham. Who is our outreach coordinator from the Las Vergenes Malibu Council of Governments, who's gonna expand a little bit on this, and of course, share his expertise, uh, from his one background, but. Another good month for July, uh, outreach team gave sixty-six unduplicated contacts, so a lot of, every day is new, new, new contacts coming in. Some stay, some leave that same day, uh, so, you know, just typical month, four for, four individuals were moved off the street, uh, two were temporarily housed. And two were relocated, usually that means, uh, you know, family reunification, so like, like they go back to their place of origin. But as mentioned, another solid month, and that I'll pass it on to Gabe, who can, uh, just kind of share a little bit of what he's seeing up there, a little bit about his activities, he also does outreach for. Mention all the different projects, so, Galveston, Segor, and here as well, so he works hand in hand with our outreach team, makes a platform for it, so.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you, we appreciate it.
I was, I'm sorry, Gabe Graham?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you, Sergeant, you say.
Thank you.
Y'all there, thank you, alright. Thanks for coming tonight, we really appreciate that, really, really do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Sergeant.
So we're seeing a a rather late in the season increase in population, which isn't unusual for the summer season. I think due to the cooler weather throughout the summer, we're starting to see a little bit more movement now, rather than early in the year. So some people are sticking around, I'm a little concerned about what's going on in Legacy Park, there's been some activities and stuff recently that that they're very concerned. Um, but uh, like we said, the People Concerned continue to house individuals almost weekly. Uh, and we just got a lady that was hard to reach off uh Zuma Beach, who'd been staying by Tower Ten for a while, she was very difficult to to convince to go inside, they got her, um, in interim housing last week. Um, I guess two, what else can I can I add to that?
Do you know the first letter of the name?
We'd rather not share for confidence, but but I will share about this woman, for example, I mean, it's kind of the good example of this house.
Just the first letter, because I know.
Jean.
Oh, gee, finally, great, I know, okay, I know that.
So. A lot, a lot of the reasons why she was housed was because of the constant outreach that Gabe would provide. Sometimes Gabe's a better outfit than the outreach team and vice versa. I mean, these individuals, as you all know, come from all walks of life, a lot of it is consistency, working with different people. Who Gabe was working with on a regular basis, until point two, we came to a point where housing was ready, she took it. She had been here for, we'll say decades, years for sure.
Years, yeah.
Years, at least five years, thank you.
Yeah, at least four years, and then now she's indoors, so it's kind of one of those things, right, we have uh maximize all these elements that we have to our disposal to make stuff happen. Obviously, for this housing opportunity, Gabe is crucial. Um, as far as anything else we can, we're doing.
Well, we have another individual that that gave up housing in the past and has reconsidered and wants to go back inside. So just the constant engagement with the outreach team from the People Concerned really makes a difference over time. Somebody might not be ready at one point, but they they regret it, they regret being outside. Um, I can say, I don't know how much you know about the the Measure A funding, I know that we've secured three additional beds uh with People Concerned, which is gonna be very helpful, so that brings our total from four to seven beds that we can utilize, and I know that they're filling those as we speak, so that's that's also good news. We're also hiring a a full-time clinician, uh, mental health.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Clinician, uh, mental health professional, that'll be very helpful for, you know, moments where people are in crisis, assessment, they can navigate the mental health system, uh, which will also be able to utilize that person cog wine, so.
You should talk about Legacy Park, is there anything in this group could help you with that?
I just, I I I think having additional sher- sheriff, you know, uh, patrols or just being aware of what's going on um, in the park, I know it's, uh, Frank does a lot of, a lot of times will just be, you can drive right into the park.
You're talking about Frank Espinoza?
Espinoza, yes, correct. Uh, and just sometimes being uh being visible is enough for people to kind of check their behavior, check themselves. Uh, but I think like Louise has said, that that with the car retrievals that we're doing and they're gonna start locking the wheels up. It's gonna help with, I think, some of the personal items, but we're seeing an increase in that, I think, just because of people coming into town.
I think that's a large part of why we're seeing issues, because you can take the car, you can store your belongings there, and you have a cluster of belongings. And they kind of have this, you know, written under agreement that like no one's gonna touch each other's stuff, so it's become this storage place for them. But you know, obviously, we work with Hopeless, who's already in the process of geofencing their cars, and you don't have that resource for them to use, as well as with Ralphs, you know, we continue to work with them. Report the car stolen, and you don't really have that resource and it becomes less of a gamble. I we still believe it's gonna be a place where these folks will hungry and so forth, but it's just kind of that consistency in trying to work with them to get rid of the cards, to accept services, you know, you know, and they they get a little mad that we take the card, but it is what it is, you know what I mean? It's kind of that festering, you know, having Gabe out there, having Frank out there, having the People Concerned out there, that eventually has led to some of these individuals being housed. Uh, I mean, there are people there who have been here homeless for decades, uh, that were there before, that have not been housed. Uh, you know, as mentioned, this other individual that that we just spoke of who's been here for years for sure, just got housed, so a lot of that is just consistency. And and really looking at where we can maximize some of those resources that we do have, and one of them is having that collaboration with the retailers nearby to make something happen, but. It's it's, yeah, more work is happening.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Um, does IPS help for Legacy, do they patrol inside?
No, they're shopping centers mainly, which is helpful, but but they're mainly like the rough shopping.
Okay. And the person that you said had come out of housing and now want to go back, the first letter R? Female from Colorado?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay, that's a big, so the G and the R are massive accomplishments, because the R, I was just gonna mention today, she would walk a little dazed because exhausted, she's almost seventy years old, and very close to cars pulling in and out of.
Oh, no, 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 that's just somebody different, I know who you're talking about, but that's just somebody different.
That one is not the one, okay, but the G hats off to you, that's the most difficult case, and we talked about it before.
Right. Right.
Thank you, because she's great, she's a nice person, but to take her off the street, that's a very big accomplishment, that's.
Hope that she stays, but so far, so good.
Yeah, that's massive, thank you, just get her a lot of white clothes, because she wears that, yeah, thank you so much.
Been a better week. Right, she does. You bet.
Um, what are we doing that we can do? I, my opinion is that I think we're doing, we're going in the right direction, we're doing well, a good team, how can we get better?
Well, I think over time, we we are getting better, like we we got more beds, I think that's great, we're 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 getting a clinician, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, of course.
Uh, I I just think having having, again, the sheriff response or the sheriff visibility presence uh is very helpful. So for instance, we have a lot of issues at the civic center, at the at the library, right?
Sure.
Um, I I think just patrolling through there at night is 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 very helpful. Again, it's because that seems to be when a lot of things get out of control. Uh, just driving through the parking lot, letting letting them them know that they're they're there. Um, driving through the park, if they can do that in the evening hours, I mean, you can't, they can't drive through Legacy Park.
Got it.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, we'll see what to with the clinicians mentioned, how that changes elements, because now we have an actual mental professional working, from from the People Concerned, working hand in hand with Gabe, with the outreach team, making these referrals and expediting, you know, some of these holes, some of these individuals are ready for hope, as you probably imagine. Uh, so, you know, I guess, yeah, like I said, we're moving in the right direction, I think more visibility would be key. Uh, really just, I guess, better you better maximizing what we do have at our disposal currently, just kind of continuing and stay stay on top, because as you all know, we we take our foot off the gas for even a few weeks, I mean, you'll have a restart showing up, start people showing up. Well, there's no deputies checking here, there's nobody siding us here, like it's cool, no one's really checking us, but really, when if you kind of really stand on top of it, I think that's what's kept our numbers where they are and hopefully improve.
Yeah, I fully agree, is it just, I mean, are they starting to like party more and more?
I think so.
Yeah, I got it, it's getting crazy down there.
Yeah. It's getting crazy down there.
Alright.
But the good news is I'm not expecting, you know, the 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 Sheriff's Homeless Count is coming up again, I know Lost is prepar- preparing for that, which is gonna be one of their only few remaining uh responsibilities is is conducting the homeless count, so I don't expect our numbers to increase. We might see a decrease, uh, continued decrease.
From the, to lead, what are we at now?
The number of these was, I believe, it's twenty seven vehicles and twenty one individuals, so like, eh, but kind of rose out to a preliminary comes thirty three.
Out of the fire.
Right.
Yeah, it was, so that that didn't factor in, but I mean, even in kind of our 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 field checks on the regular basis.
I don't expect an increase.
So you know all the vehicles as well?
No way.
Uh, a good chunk, a good chunk.
Because I, I know three, but they're somewhere.
A lo- a large majority.
You're just okay, I I have three of them, see more.
And and the way that the Lost protocol is for those is that, I mean, they they have certain criteria that they use for us, like if we pass by an individual that is has, you know, something, things that give off the fact that it's homeless, then obviously they're gross counted, but again, that's just sound like a time shot of what homelessness looks like on that day in time, which ours was delayed because we had the fire, of course, but uh, yeah, I mean, it's it's pretty reflected where we are currently, just in doing their field checks, I mean, Gabe was out there on a regular, I'm out there on a regular, People Concerns out there pretty much daily, you know, so it's it's been pretty, pretty.
Yeah, the clinician is great, because every day citizen residents cannot deal with fifty one fifty situations.
Right.
Children walking around, Pepperline students track team, what they have in the past, so we really appreciate that. But thank you so much, because I want to share with Louise and with you that it's a massive concern of Malibu people, that the homeless people exist in what's called the Skid Row of Malibu, like, you know, part of the library. Um, women are very concerned, uh, kids do not walk from Sarah to their um public schools, I'm not sure they like to, only because of this. So I would like to let you know that people are petrified, are are very concerned of it. I know we sound positive and we sound really hopeful, but it is a massive problem in Malibu, that when people want to walk in that area and they can't. Um, now, I don't know about the light ordinances, like, what do you call light, I forgot the name.
Art inspection?
Yes, so because if there were like stadium lights right there, or it would be, or lights, or even floodlights, it would but I don't know the law, I'll talk, I'll try to get educated on that, but it's a massive concern for women and children and their safety. They behave completely different towards you or Mark Russo or Joshua than they would toward, I've been assaulted twice, I know, and like Susan. They completely act differently toward men than they do toward women and children, and it's a massive problem in Malibu. It, so people are very concerned, and I have a lot of conversations about it, so thank you, but a lot more needs to be done. So anything you need from us, please always let us know, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for all your hard work, we really appreciate you, thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, thanks for the advice.
Thank you, Gabe. Alright, moving right along. We are going to five A.
Five A?
Yeah, five A, could we put it?
Yep. Uh, so parking guide, uh, talks, you all know, high influx of visitors that come to Malibu year round, but more importantly, the summer. Uh, and one of those big issues is is parking, uh, legal parking, um, you know, where where you need to be. Uh, there's a lot of confusion as to where, you know, folks can park, especially, I know we've gone over this over and over again at Point Doom. A lot of folks can not jam the parking lot at the Headlands, um, you know, and then they don't know if there's a Westward Beach paid parking lot. Happens at uh Fama Matador Beach as well, happens at Escondido Falls, Surf Rider, a lot of parking violations, obviously. Uh, there's a lot of, you know, issues that our Parking Enforcement, Sheriff's Department of the UBS, kind of all collaborate on working on, but but really, the point of this of this item is, as you all, as you all know, is developing a parking guide that that really could help visitors, uh, better understand where they can park. Helps reduce the number of people who can park legally, so, you know, this guide can be physical, can be digital, can be an app, can be, you know, a PDF on our website. Something intuitive that helps visitors, you know, um, and residents as well, kind of just identify all the public and private parking lots in the city. Um, you know, all sections of PCH, city streets where parking is legal, obviously subjects posted signage, so. I wanted to bring this forth and recommend the discussion of the development of a parking guide. Uh, again, like I say, an app form, PDF form, whatever you guys would like to do, and then obviously, we can, we can present this to the City Council, whatever you guys would like for.
What is a deadline?
For?
For the parking, like for us?
No, yeah.
It's just an ever evolving thing that we do, or?
It's just a creation of the guide itself, and there's no deadline, so I think you guys would like to proceed.
Could the app identify when when Zuma was was last weekend, there was no parking?
Yeah.
Can the app have an update that actually tells people, is this full?
I'm sure we, the guide when programmed to work that way.
You're gonna have to get the cooperation of Beaches and Harbors to do that. But they run their parking lots with Last, who is our Parking Enforcement also, so, you know, and I mean, uh, but go ahead and finish your.
Oh, that's up.
Yeah, just want to get a public comment.
We do, we have Brian Embry, come on up.
I I read uh the first part of what I think uh Brian has put together here, is this, is your format?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's a great template, and I would suggest maybe that this would be a um, a third-party app, maybe something it's school kids might do or something. There's uh one element, which I think is this middle of the three bullet dots on page one. And I'm sure Brian will fully understand what I'm about to say. The fatal crashes that have occurred in Malibu have had to do with misdirection. There was the Adam Wiseman from Moon Shadows, of course, they sued the city for gazillions. Um, took his Infinity and did a five-lane U-turn on PCH and was broadsided by Gabriel something um in his Jetta. Probably a bad day for him. And the passenger had brain damage. And it was all about the vehicle being presented in the wrong direction and confusion, and by the way, they were high and drunk, and but that came out later. The second one was just outside the city, but it was Malibu residents, it was Terry Love's son Tyler, who was riding his motorcycle to Santa Monica with a friend on the back to go see a movie. And the same thing happened. Five-lane U-turn because I think it was for Chart House, but at the time, it was called Chart House, not Mastro's. And the out-of-town tourists got confused, they went there, they were full, they didn't take reservations, so they decided to go back into Malibu to find some other restaurant. There's a great video of Ty- of Tyler's mother on YouTube, see?
You're telling them the motorcyclist, right, who that passed away?
Yes. And so that one was because people weren't sure where to go or where to park. And the fact that somebody might want to go to the beach, and then maybe we have a parking lot or situation that might be on the other side of PCH could require somebody to cross PCH, make U-turns, then they park there, they might have to walk across PCH again. And all these things to out-of-towners um are a problem. Um, the one in Moon Shadows, they were, I don't know if they were from Texas, or they were from somewhere else too. And so, um, they, you can have a great program and they still won't understand it, because it's the first time for everybody. So I'm I'm, for liability reasons, I'm concerned that the city would be giving someone step-by-step navigation directions on what to do or where to park. And I I know that probably hits Mark right, uh, hits Brian right in his heart, because it, just what you're probably trying to solve here is give somebody a clear direction on what to do, but this is a dynamic variable, and there, it could be that all the parking is full. And that the the directions would basically be giving people directions to go to one full parking lot, to another full parking lot, as we just heard uh today, as Zuma got filled up again. And so parking is an issue, and I I would, I would like you to, maybe next month, talk about how, what happens at Zuma when the parking lot gets full? Is there an assumption that the beach is full? Because that came up um under McLaren the year before, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um. Yeah, it was Tyler and Keith.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good friends of mine.
It's hard, oh, they were, they put two trees in their honor there, those two palm trees right there.
Um, alright, do you want to, this is cutting your baby, you want to?
Well, I guess, yeah, so, um, uh, so, uh, you know, if you look, so Santa Monica's already got one and theirs is, theirs is pretty good as far as like telling you how much open spots there are. I don't expect the city of Malibu to come up with something like that, uh, other than, yeah, we could do that in the future somehow, but we've got issues because only a few of our parking lots are ours, most of them belong to Beaches and Harbors, and they belong to, um.
What else they belong to?
Well, Beaches and Harbors is, oh, state parks, sorry, yeah, state parks. So, um, but it would be nice to be able to include them in this, or at least have something that's scalable, that then, you know, they could add, right? Um, so, you know, if you, if you look at these QR codes, so I I know this because I have a vacation home in another state, in a small town that gets an influx of people every every weekend, and um, they have these signs, and they're just saying, you know, this is where your parking is, but they but one of the things that's important on the sign is that it says, if you illegal park, this is like two hundred fifty dollar fine, or whatever it is, right? Whatever ours is, I don't know what it is, but, you know, and a toll, right? So, but if you, I mean, I did this QR code and I put this little map and on that that it goes to for for Malibu for of Point Doom. Now, it's not interactive, it's nothing, but but like if you take your phone and you use the QR code, which most people know how to do now since COVID, it will take you right to this back page on my website, it doesn't have to be obviously my website, but it shows where you can park if you're at Point Doom. Now, in the Santa Monica one, they, I put that QR code there as well. That'll tell you exactly where you are and where these parking lots and where these parking spaces are. I mean, after talking to Mr. Russo often about this and the State Rangers, they're like, hey, most people just don't know where to park, you know? But if they had these signs, and I'm not talking about just like one sign, I think these signs. But if they had these signs, and I'm not talking about just like one sign, I think these signs, like where, that this little town that I'm talking about, they have these signs, um you know, on a lot of different streets in the area. So it's not like it's a total proliferation of signs, but it's enough, and it's more than just two, like State Parks has. And State Parks sign that they put up at Point Dune, that was put up after myself and another resident got involved and was like, look, you guys gotta do something about this, cause they're blocking Bourbon, they're blocking Cliffside, and people just don't know what to do. So they put it, and they put this little tiny thing about, there's a 375 lot, parking lot down below. Like, people don't read that. It needs to be very simple, because at least for Point Dune, you got the huge parking lot down below. You have Zuma parking lot. For Matador, you have those state parking lots, there's like three or four. Um the one, and at Surf Rider, you got a state park at the Lagoon. You have a county Beaches and Harbors lot at the Adamson House. And then you have, I'm not sure, I guess that's another county lot at the pier. So you got these mixed-up piers. You also have the, you also have the parking that they charge for at the old Malibu Inn, Aviator. So you know, this doesn't have to be just, it just needs to be parking. And I think that you could have some kid design this thing where they just go like to a Google map. It's not that difficult um to do. So um and then have, like I said, have it scalable, so that in the future, we can add to, maybe we can get Beaches and Harbors. We need other people to tell us, hey, there's 15 spots available here, like in Santa Monica, they go, hey, there's 15 spots here, there's 10 spots, there's this or that. And I think also that it should also go in, which is getting a little bit beyond the, the app aspect of it. But there should be a sign at Zuma um that says, hey, there's this many spots left, you know, but that's Beaches and Harbors, right? So but I think that we need to work with our other partners in this to get that done. And I don't think that it's very difficult to design, so I would ask that we, you know, um try to make it happen. And also, I think the city could sell advertising on it too. Like, hey, you know, boom, it pops up and it's like Whole Foods or whatever, right? And that would help pay for it. I don't think this has to be a big expensive thing. Um I also think that possibly you could do it where you let, this is such a basic thing, and kids these days are developing apps and stuff so much that maybe, maybe it could be a, a, a city scholarship thing or something that someone could come up with that we could do. So um I, I just think that it's, other cities have it, especially cities that have it. We have certain areas that are just heavily impacted by parking. And I think that we could solve not all the problems, but at least some of them where people would actually go, oh, if I park here, I'm gonna get a $250 fine and my car need to be towed, cause they're not looking at the don't park here little tow sign, cause they know that we don't really tow that much anymore. But if they see that and they're from out of town and that, cause usually it's a lot of, I can tell you, at least at Point Dune, it's um, it's a lot of uh foreign visitors and other people like that, that don't really have a clue as to where's going on. You can go up on Point Dune any, any day and hear, hear of many different languages going on there. But a QR code, parking, it's pretty basic on your phone, everybody has their phone, and then they can go and find a place to park. Um so that's my take on it. I don't know what, I, I think there can be more things added to it. Uh but it could be a platform and a base that we can go off of. There are third parties that do it, but I'd like to see that we keep control of it somehow. I understand the liability, maybe the attorney uh at the City Council level can talk to that. But um I, I, I think that this is a program that could be designed, and it could be designed by an outside group and, and then implemented by the city, cause really, all we need is a map on the city website that's showing where different, where the parking is. I mean, like I said, I don't know how many of you actually did the QR code, this one with the sign, but I did that in an hour, and I don't even know what I'm doing. So I just took, you know, I did it within an hour, so um uh that's, that's my take on it, so. Anyone else have anything else they wanna add? Anyone, what about you? You, you're around the front lines of those tickets.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, you gotta look where the major concentration, you know, where we see all the parking issues is definitely gonna be on the point, it's gonna be on Westward and Zuma, the lots up there. You know, and, and it, it's kind of interesting, you know, we get called on the weekends quite often to kind of bail Laz out at the parking lots because they have a, you know, system where they will, the lot is full, but even though you'll see cars coming out. And I was talking with the guy last weekend, and I said, so what's your methodology exactly for determining if you have available parking? And they'll have a runner go back there and just kind of look at spots, and they're not always accurate, it's not always timely, they're not always available. And the guy was telling me that they gotta have something like 11 or 15 open spots before they'll reopen the lot. So it's not this very efficient, dynamic way of doing it, of controlling the lot. So you know, we go down there primarily just to turn people around. But yeah, I mean, I think that looking at alternatives, if the lot's full, the lot's full, okay? But up on the point, you know, where there's so much restricted parking anyway around the streets, it's like your options are going down, parking on Grasswood, parts of Doom Drive, parts of Fern Hill, you know, or you go down to that Westward lot, which on the weekend is just, you know, it's a mixed bag. A lot of times, they, you know, it's, they'll open and shut it 15 times, uh you know, in the afternoon, depending on, you know, how full it gets. But um so I think, yeah, that's the number one question that we get asked up there is where can I park? You know, and so we try to direct them as best we can. We're not always up there, cause we're moving around a lot. And it's confusing, cause each area, you know, Broad Beach, Broad Beach is pretty straightforward, but El Matador, you know, really like everything in front or the side of El Matador, you can't park. You have to go way down the highway to effectively do the same thing, you know? So it's just now you have a further walk. And then, you know, down at Civic Center, um you know, you have that area by the Adamson House. That's, you know, by the way, the pier is a state parking lot.
Okay.
So but you know, you have, that, that's a very impacted area for parking. There's just not a lot of parking. I think the majority of people either park in the Lagoon, or they park over at Malibu Village. A lot of people are just doing that. But yeah, right now, we have no information on where they can park, so I think something like that would be helpful for sure.
Creating, it's an easy thing to create. I mean, it's such an easy G I S thing to create that. I, I would think two things, one of them for sure, probably the city attorney will give it any liability issues. I know the Santa Monica one, I've used that too before. It's really nice to have something that actually tells you where there's an empty spot. But that takes either a lot more technology than maybe we wanna invest in.
No, and it's not, but, but in the future, and as these parking lot operators have their, um maybe they get the infrastructure, whether it's Beaches and Harbors or whoever, cause we don't control most of our parking.
No.
So, so you know, maybe they get, and we all work together somehow, cause Santa Monica's been able to pull it off. And uh I think we should be able to do that.
I think it's a reached for idea.
But it's just, I don't expect it to, I expect it to be pretty far in the future for it, to tell us how many open spots there are.
So what is the idea? The overall general concept is to help people find parking, right? Let them know kind of there's a parking lot here, there's a parking lot there.
Yeah.
Is the, um the, the thing that's, I'm questioning is, they scan a QR code, are they gonna be willing to download an app for that? Or should it just go straight to part of the city's website with a G I S?
Yeah.
In it?
That's what I think.
Right, embedded in it, and then they can zoom in and out?
Yeah.
Like it's something to easy to start.
I don't think it's a, I think if somebody wants to download an app, they can, because then in the future, for the parking that's in Malibu that we do control, like on Civic Center or whatever, you can pave with the app and then park in the spot.
Yeah, I think, I think.
So I mean, this is all just looking forward to try and get, to get a platform that incorporates that. But um I don't think that right now, it necessarily has to be an app.
I think that it would be a good idea for the city to have an app, not necessarily just for this, right? That's something that we can incorporate into the app later. That app's gonna take, let's be honest, a couple of years to do, right? With the city doing it. But I mean, that, that way, with the, with the app, you can sign up for home, home hardening inspection. You can report, you know, down, you can, you can do all kinds of things with an app. But for this, my attitude, just to get this thing started, is to scan the QR code, get, get to the city website with the G I S with, you know, the.
We have a map on the.
You have a map.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, this, this one here is just buried on the back, back of my personal website, cause I didn't know where else to put it. You know, so and then it shows you a map of Point Dune, so.
There you go, so.
Uh it just goes right to that, and then, see the green is where you can park, there's a parking lot down here, you know?
Great.
But it doesn't, mine doesn't show you where you are currently, but that's easy to do, I, for what I've told.
So should, do you wanna make a motion?
Um okay, so I will make a motion. Let's see what, let me just see what they're. Yeah. So I, I will make a motion to recommend that uh we take this parking guide, if you wanna call it that, with that to the City Council and, and have them possibly give us more direction on how to achieve that. And I'd like there to be some sort of timeframe on it that, you know, that, to try and shoot for having something uh by next, you know, summer.
April.
Or April.
If you're just gonna do a map.
Yeah, on the city website.
Do that in a week.
Yeah.
You know.
But, but I mean, but it should also be with future.
What's the map?
Just, it should be, it should be scalable, though. It should be something that we can add to over time, um is what I would say. But I mean, if they want.
Keep it simple?
Yeah, keep it simple.
For now?
But, but don't restrict it. I, 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 I don't think it has to be an app, like you said. I think it should just be a QR code that takes you to a map where you can park.
It should be, it'll be a static map on the map.
Could be, it could be static or.
Just produce a static map, have a picture file that's in another.
But the Malibu's too big to, Malibu's too big to, I think, do that.
I like the G I S ability, so you can, you can see through R.
Can you do that with a map?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, easily. Uh so you wanna put that into a motion form?
Where should I?
No, we just started discussing something.
I thought I would leave it.
No. Uh do you want me to give it a shot?
Yeah, sure.
Um make a recommendation to council to develop a QR code system that leads you to the city website with a G I S map with labeled uh parking areas for beaches, trails.
Are you talking about just parking lots and the streets too?
Parking lots.
Streets too.
And streets.
Okay.
Just any of it, like available parking.
Label, mark it.
Yeah, I mean, you could, like, so for my example, I just did green streets versus nothing, but you could do red streets, I guess. But yeah, uh we're not gonna name the number of parking, just these are areas where you can park.
Right, because it says to reduce the number of people who park illegally.
Yes.
Yeah, tell them so they know where they can park illegally.
Yeah, and then you have a disclaimer that doesn't guarantee that it's not full.
Right.
So you just buy.
But just understand, it, there's a lot of streets in Malibu, and some of the streets have parking restrictions.
Yeah, that's a G I S.
So we have to accommodate parking restrictions, and as a government app, we'll probably have to make it somehow accessible to, not just.
What if you just?
Not with the L C U.
Yes.
But what if you just started with parking lots? What if?
Parking lots would be simple.
Or P C H parking lot.
What if we learn that as commissioners, we, we learn that we send it to council?
Yeah.
And then they discuss it for an hour, and then that, and then it ends up being something else?
Yeah, I mean, we'll write a staff, we'll write a staff report with details what it'll take to do it at different levels.
So let's just keep it simple.
So if it's just parking lots, if we're doing streets, cause that's a little more complicated, how do we accommodate for different parking restrictions? How do we accommodate to make sure it's accessible for people don't speak English, so they understand that green means yes, red means no, you know, I don't know.
Well, that's why we give it to them, and they make the big bucks.
Yeah, they make big bucks and then they give it to staff to do.
But I, I mean, I think, um yeah, I mean, I would, I, I, I think it should be parking lots or just available parking.
Yeah.
Because you're not gonna, I mean, there is one parking lot that, that theoretically could help with you a lot. But it takes a little bit to get there from where they're gonna be trying to illegally park, whereas there's some street parking that's a lot closer.
And we will put no zones in the map, like absolutely no zones.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can take an, I think, council that kind of gives them an overview of the different options. I think super basic would be just parking lots, right? A little more detail of these streets, but this is what it's going to entail.
If you just say it's a phased approach, give, give the City Council an opportunity to develop this in a phased approach for implementation.
Yeah. But I mean, that might be hard to, to lay up what it'll take to do.
Right, I mean, and if it's too much work for the staff, I mean, again, they could be, I'm pretty sure that these high school students could do something or, or you know.
That takes work too.
That's such a challenge to them, oh, high school student.
That's. No, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but I mean, it's like, it doesn't have to take up your valuable time doing other things if we offer a $500 scholarship to someone.
Another set of R F Bs you would, it would be a high school R F B for that.
Yeah, but I mean, like, you know, $500 scholarship, you know, towards your college fund, and, and these kids, I mean,
They're brilliant, they're brilliant.
They're gonna, they're gonna rule the world soon.
Take the five minutes.
Yeah. Um so did we make an adequate motion, or did we just start discussing something?
Do you wanna reback what you have as a motion?
Can we reclarify the motion that's on the table, please?
Okay, let's do it. So uh.
Do you want me to read back what the two motions?
Yeah, hit me with it.
So the first motion that Commissioner Merrick discussed, recommend taking the parking guide to City Council and have them give staff or end the commission more directions on how to achieve that with a timeframe preferably before summer. That's the first recommendation. Second recommendation from Chair Spiegel, uh make a recommendation to City Council to create a QR code to take to the city's website or G I S map labeled with available parking within the city.
Okay, so I'll withdraw mine, cause his is more accurate.
I think so.
So we start, we start with yours, yeah. We'd start with yours, QR code to show, so what, what was it then? Cause I might make a friendly amendment just to.
You know, it's not, yeah, of course.
So the motion from Chair Spiegel is to make a recommendation to City Council to create a QR code system. And it will take them to the city's website or G I S map labeled with available parking within the city.
That's pretty good. Um but I'd like to ha, I'd like to have this, the.
Yeah, available and forbidden, available and forbidden.
Yeah. So you're gonna make a friendly amendment to that then?
I guess that's what it's called.
And so my only other friendly amendment, if you would be okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Is uh to, to try and get uh this accomplished by summer of, of twenty twenty-six.
Before maybe more than five?
Well, we'll see. Hopefully, it comes back to us before that.
Is it, it's not coming back, is it?
Maybe it wasn't.
Okay.
Okay, so what council's?
Okay, so the amended, the amended motion is to make a recommendation to City Council to create a QR code system to take individuals to the city's website or G I S map labeled with available parking within the city and to have this accomplished by summer of twenty twenty-six.
Yes.
Do I have a first on the floor for the motion?
First?
Or second, sorry.
I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Ariya Yaya, Vice Chair Merrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair Spiegel?
Yep.
Vote as fast.
Cool.
Thank you.
Moving along to five D, Parking Enforcement Monthly Report.
Yes, we have our July twenty twenty-five uh Parking Enforcement Monthly Report. Uh as mentioned, these reports are available on our website for your reference, so kind of following along the same pattern, month to month. Uh biggest citation being the no front rear license plate. I counted for forty-nine point three percent of the citations. Uh it's, it's been our.
Fifty.
It's been our busy, it's been the busiest month this, uh this year uh for citations. Total citations was six thousand ninety-six, so almost double the busiest month so far of May. So again, very, very, very good month, almost sixty-one hundred citations. Uh you know, following the no front plate, the, the second biggest was the obeying signs, obviously parking on the red, uh parking overnight where it's marked no parking total five or two to four. Uh you know, mixture of expired registration, blocking fire hydrants, and just a mixture of other violations. But another very strong month by the Parking Enforcement Team. Uh amongst those sixty-one hundred uh citations, four hundred eighty-two warnings uh and three hundred eighty-three contested or appeals uh were made from those, so.
I got a.
Any questions? I'm sorry.
I got a question. I noticed, uh and maybe we can't answer that right now, it'd be nice if these guys were here.
Yeah.
But I noticed that uh they've been painting red by all the fire hydrants. And I'm just wondering if those reds correspond with what I see here, which is parking fifteen feet within a fire hydrant? Cause it could be this.
They would, they would. It's just, it's a visual indicator that you're parking in front of a fire hydrant. You're not gonna cite them for both, cause there's a separate violation.
But so, but I'm just saying that the red is fifteen, does it red to paint go fifteen feet from the fire hydrant?
In certain areas it does. I mean, where they can do it, like on Malibu Road, it's fifteen feet.
Okay.
But other areas.
But I just wondered if it's given someone a false idea that I just have to park outside the red, when that may not be fifteen feet from the fire hydrant?
It could. I mean, I haven't measured them.
Yeah, I mean, that's just.
You know, so, so I, I have seen some that seem a little shorter than fifteen feet to me.
Right. Me too.
Like I think on Heather Cliff, maybe I saw one.
Yeah, that's, well, I mean, I'm seeing a few of those, but I think some of them are on streets that are. Yeah, that's, well, I mean, I've seen a few of those, but I mean, some of them are on streets that are no parking, so it doesn't matter, but.
Yeah, so I don't know why they're shorter, but yeah.
They they won't really hit you double for it anyway, though, you either get the blocking hydrant or the parking within fifteen feet.
Yeah.
Um, but usually, I mean, these guys do have the actual like big ruler to go out and measure.
Measure, yeah, yeah.
I'm glad, I just found out about this, so that's.
Yeah, but yeah, I mean, it's it's a mix, it's a mixture.
So theoretically, the fifteen feet is really thirty feet, because it's fifteen each side of the hydrant?
No, it's fifteen total feet.
Total, okay, alright, well, that makes a.
Oh, like seven and a half, okay, that's.
So. Yeah, and the thing that used to drive us crazy is like on the east end kind of past where Dubbs was,
Oh, okay.
you know, there's homes built right up to the fire hydrants and people, you know, we kind of look at it like, can the fire department access the uh the hydrant?
Yeah. Right.
You know, if they get in there, because they need room to work with in there, right? And so uh but some of them, you know, you definitely have to have fifteen feet.
Right, oh, of course.
You know, so.
See, I mean, I didn't know, you didn't know, I I I was like, oh, it's fifteen each side of the fire hydrant.
Yeah, yeah, it's a twelve feet.
Yeah. No, it's not thirty feet, it's fifteen.
Gotcha, okay.
How much is the fine for a no for a front license plate?
Fifty eight?
Fifty eight, so it's a ten box if you get it fixed.
Fifty eight.
Yeah, yeah. I know from experience.
Just a much.
And now I have a sixty dollar adjustment thing that fits on the front and the tow hook and now I have a front license.
Yeah, so it's fifty eight and then uh ten dollar for corrections.
How does that work?
So when you get the ticket, it'll, you'll have an outstanding amount of fifty eight, but then we, on the backside of the ticket, there's a box that allows for a share for a C H P signature. So once you get your front or your rear plate, um and you have a deputy go and review it, they sign off on it and they mail it in or they can show one of the staff here, myself, Noah, whoever else is here, and then that fifty dollar fine.
Okay.
Well, you guys can sign off on it?
No, we don't sign it, we'll make the adjustment on the front, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you go through that, but lost hills.
So.
Yeah, Lost Hills is where I did it.
So it's one or the other, right? You pay and then it's not like a rebate, right? So you go, you you can fix it before the fine is due.
Yeah.
Yes.
What, do we know?
Twenty one days, you mean.
Approximately, do we have any clue how many people are getting their, are fixing it or they just?
We had corrections, I had about a thousand.
Three hundred.
A thousand.
And this is when I checked, was it June maybe?
Yeah.
May or June, I checked to see how many corrections we have and this is.
That's pretty good.
So people are just paying fifty eight dollars just in people in no front plate, they're just like a re-accruing charge from the city, yeah.
So thousands.
Yes, but.
Yeah, they're probably visitors who are like, you know.
Yeah.
Well, they're Tesla owners, list three thousand of that.
Yeah.
They have to do it, I mean, lunchtime Malibu country mart, that's all I'm telling you.
But that's private property.
Yeah, we don't cite them.
You can't cite the private.
Oh, you can't do it, oh, okay, cool.
But they do get your routes.
Yeah, you could cite for handicap or fire lane violations in there, but we don't, unless they have a sign that says California vehicle codes enforced in in, you know, all the entrances, you know, typically we'll go in there if there's, like I said, a handicap requirement, so.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Do you have anything else?
I do not.
The jury?
I have seven more pages, but just kidding.
No, you do not.
Uh, Chair Spiegel?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, do you adjourn the meeting at six fifty six AM?
Okay, fair enough, close enough. It's probably six fifty five, yes.
That's what's on my computer, that's on the computer.
And we have to say.
Right, it's all good, six fifty six, you're right.
Okay, thank you.